Yeah.
Well, good evening and thank you all for coming out. We're going to start up a little bit one minute early. And can you introduce our guests and off we go with our workshop?
So this is Sam.
The Picas? Oh, yeah.
Picas, want to do it correctly from North Star Planning. We have been working with North Star Planning over the last six to eight months, getting enrolled in the Community Resilience Partnership, which is a grant program through the state and offers a lot of grant opportunities for the town. So North Star has been sort of taking the lead on that, getting our application through doing community outreach, which is part of why we're here tonight, to gauge the community's input on this program and partnership and what things are important with the community. They have a presentation tonight. I assume you're taking feedback, questions and answers. And what have I missed, Sam?
Yeah, yeah. So like Becky said, I'm Sam Picas with North Star Planning. We are contract planners for the town of Pownal. So we have a good relationship with the town. And we're helping the town enroll in the Community Resilience Partnership. It's a grant program to help the town make energy efficiency, resilient infrastructure upgrades, and things pertaining to climate resilience. And the goal of our workshop is really to understand some of those key assets and vulnerabilities facing Pownal, as well as to start thinking about some goals the town can prioritize for grant applications.
Absolutely.
I'm working with Sam. My name is Lucy Perkins. I'm representative of consulting. And so together we're partnering, supporting Pownal. You'll see us present together and then slowly get into the discussion.
Are you ready for the presentation?
Yeah, sure.
All right. So we're just going to start with a brief overview. Becky, if you want to scroll down to the first section, this is a story map that's publicly available. So you can engage with this information after the meeting if you have questions or want to spend more time with the overview that Sam and I will provide briefly. We're just going to go through each of the elements that are in the story map and provide some more information, then we'll get into the discussion afterwards. So just again, as Sam mentioned, this is part of the Community Resilience Partnership, which is a statewide program that's managed and organized out of the Governor's Office of Policy Innovation in the future. And as Sam mentioned, it provides grants and technical assistance to main communities to really help them identify and address local priorities that reduce greenhouse gas emissions, help the town transition to clean energy, and also become more resilient to climate impacts, including but not limited to what we'll talk about tonight, which are extreme storms and extended power outages, flooding and inundated roadways, and then threats to public health such as impaired water quality. You can see from the map that's on the right, these are towns and communities that are participating in the Community Resilience Partnership. This is as of 2024. So it's actually, there's more color on it after this past year when they awarded more grant funding. Right now, there are 263 communities that are part of the partnership, which represents two thirds of the state's population. And the way the program is organized is really meant to specifically support and provide capacity to rural, smaller, low-capacity communities, which is how Sam and I are sort of integrated into this project. They do so by giving grant funding to communities to receive support from service providers or planners like us to help them enroll in the program and get started on some of the required activities that we will complete as a group altogether. You can see the green ones are those service provider communities. So those are sort of peers, peers in the work right now. The benefits of enrolling in the program, as you can see in the sort of full paragraph at the top here, enrolled communities have access to apply for community action grants, which fund up to $75,000 towards a priority or action that the community identified. And also, participating communities have access to regional coordinators that are often hosted at the Council of Governments that can provide project development and management support, technical assistance, community engagement support, process guidance, grant writing, a lot of those added capacity that can help towns where staff are stretched thin and have a lot on their plates already to bring them up to speed and be able to participate in the program. So just again, the really big benefit here is it allows you to put in an application for an individual town project. So that's 50 to 75,000. And if you do it with a partner community in a joint project, you can receive up to $125,000 to $175,000. So the enrollment process, you can see here, is sort of really why we are coming all together over the next few months. And in the, since probably January or February, we've been working with Sam and the town to understand some of the local risks and hazards. Tonight, we'll do some worksheets that will help us identify what the town is already doing, develop a list of priorities for community actions, and then over the next few months, we'll apply for grant funds to undertake one of those actions in August of 2025. So I think like an added benefit of that is just building some partnerships and capacity by being all together here and talking about some of these topics. And then this is just a broad definition of resilience and how we're thinking about it pretty broadly in terms of the community, natural resources, and challenges that the residents of Pownal face to help them be self-sufficient and adapt to changes over time. So with that, I'll pass it back to you, Sam.
Yeah, if you could scroll down. So we've pulled out some key data highlights in terms of, these are sort of demographic indicators, often called social vulnerabilities, to kind of understand the community and risks to certain people in town. Some social vulnerabilities, when we talk about that, includes things like age, race, income level, housing insecurity, access to transportation, healthcare services. So the current identity of Pownal is it's small and rural. And the town and people in the town, as reflected in the comprehensive plan, do value the town's rural landscape and numerous outdoor recreation spaces, such as Bradbury Mountain State Park. So that's sort of the current character. If you click the arrow to the right, we'll get into some of the demographics. So population is a real key indicator here. As you can see in the graph on the right, those are three different population projections. So the current population is around 1,500. And these projections are based on the census, state economists, and recent building permit data. They are estimates, though, but they do show that generally Pownal is anticipated to see anywhere from low to high amounts of growth. So anywhere from around 3% to over 50% growth, which is quite a lot for a small town. And that's really important in terms of providing adequate resources and infrastructure and also ensuring the town has adequate new development in place to support these new populations that are going to be moving to town. This also begs the question of how the town can best manage its natural resources and beloved rural landscape in the face of a growing community. If you scroll, click the arrow to the right, thank you. So housing is another key demographic indicator. As you can see on the graph that shows Pownal's median home price over time, the current median home price is just over $500,000, according to the Maine State Housing Authority. And that is quite high. It's about 120% increase over the last 10 years. And so even though most of the population in town is fairly wealthy and there's a high rate of homeownership, as shown in the previous slide, with the growing population, this will really kind of exacerbate the people on the margins who are housing insecure or who are renting in town. So it's important to keep that in mind. The high median home price may also price out some people that are looking to buy. And then finally, with housing, the town has a lot of single-family homes on large lots. And this is, it does really create more vulnerabilities because the impact that that has is it creates what's called suburban sprawl, where you have large pieces of land on large lots. And rather than conserving more land, it actually ends up developing on more valuable resources of land. So that's another thing to highlight. If you scroll the next one. So I think the biggest, based on what we've learned, the biggest demographic indicator facing Pownal is that it's a very, it's an aging community. So about 20% of the community is 65 and over. And of that population, about 5% is living alone. So these people, often called senior citizens or older adults, are, have more difficulty coping with extreme temperatures, more often than not have disabilities or specific medical needs. The town does not have any major hospitals or urgent cares. The closest ones are about 30 minutes away in Portland. So additionally, they may have more mobility needs and need access to transportation. Some of these people may not be able to drive, and so that's an issue as well. And they also may have more needs during power outages and extreme storms. The next slide, thank you. So in summary, at face value, Pownal does not appear to be super vulnerable to the impacts of climate change because it's more inland, the town is fairly wealthy, a lot of people who live here own their own homes. People tend to be resourceful and can respond to their own needs. However, with a growing population, more and more of these challenges are going to be exacerbated. Things like food insecurity, housing insecurity, even though they're very small, as you can see, I mean, only 5% are living below the poverty line. Those are challenges that over time can grow. Pownal currently partners with Freeport for age-friendly Pownal Freeport, and they also have a food shelter as well. So these are all things that over time the town will need to address to continue to build more local resilience. And if you click on the tab that says natural resources, thank you. So these are some maps we created that kind of highlight Pownal's key landscape, conservation lands, and wetland areas. This map that you're looking at is a conservation map, and it shows all the conservation land in town. Most of this is Bradbury Mountain State Park. It's about 470 acres. And there's also other parcels that are owned through public and private conservation easements by Royal River Conservation Trusts. So it's important to continue to protect these lands. One way that the town is currently doing this is through the conservation subdivision ordinance, which allows for smaller lots and cluster design in exchange for larger amounts of open-spaced land to be preserved. If you click the arrow to the right, thank you. This is a map that shows wetland areas and vernal pools. Pownal has a number of wetlands connected through streams. Unfortunately, some of these are, or a lot of these actually are on private property, and so protecting them is really key. Wetlands are super impactful for climate change because they process pollution, they absorb carbon, and they provide a lot of wildlife habitat. There are two significant vernal pools in Pownal, and those are shown both in Bradbury Mountain State Park. So these are, again, like I said, very important resources. They're important to conserve and also consider when thinking about climate change and resilience. And then I think there's one more arrow. Yeah, thank you. And finally, this map shows aquifers and groundwater. There are two primary aquifers that supply drinking water in town. Pretty much everybody is on individual well and relies on individual well for water supply. And aquifers are particularly vulnerable to increased drought and water contaminants. And so with more extreme weather patterns, these water resources may be vulnerable. So transitioning more to like some local climate impacts. On the top, Lucy will talk about some key impacts to Pownal and the region.
And you can scroll down just a little bit. Becky, you might be able to see some of all the dots. If you can scroll down, if you scroll down on the screen just a little bit, there we go. Yeah, we can see all, perfect. Thank you. So Pownal, like much of the state of Maine, is already experiencing changing weather patterns that are affecting daily lives and livelihoods. And at a high level, you can, these are touching on some of the key impacts that are worth discussing. And each of the subsequent slides, we'll get into a few of them in more, with more information. Broadly, though, Maine and Pownal are getting warmer and wetter. So the past four years in Maine have ranked among the 10 warmest on record. And this trend can cause higher rates of heat-related illness, especially among some of the populations that Sam mentioned earlier, seniors, but also children, people who are working outside or unhoused, community members that are living outside. So that can increase your risk of experiencing some of those impacts from heat. If you go to the next slide, I think we touched on some of the subsequent, great. So this is talking about extreme storms. So I mentioned it's getting warmer, it's also getting wetter. So Pownal is experiencing more intense weather events with heavy rain and ice storms. You all might remember the storms from December of 2023 and January of 2024. These events can also cause power outages, which we'll touch on in a second. And inundation of roadways, you might have noticed areas near Chandler Brook. We've also heard about areas near the Royal River and Chadsey Road are probably particularly susceptible to some of these flooding during heavy rain events. I realize the power is actually, it's on here. So especially in rural communities, and Pownal's quite unique because it has three separate CMP service areas. So it makes the coordination during storm cleanup and power restoration harder. And so I think this past winter wasn't as bad, but I'm curious if any folks lost power for an extended period of time. Those are things to keep in mind, especially as we think about roads receiving less tree maintenance and how to recover from a storm and restore power quickly in areas that are more rural. If you go to the next slide, great. So this is again, just touching on where some of that flooding is happening. You can see some of the flood hazard boundaries and water bodies in town. These are areas that we should be thinking about as priority areas for where there are impacts and where we might want to be taking or considering action to mitigate some of those flood impacts. And knowing that this is not a coastal area, but there are different considerations to have in mind as we think about mitigating flood and inundated roadways. If you go to the next slide, I think it will talk about great droughts. So you may have noticed also changing temperatures, and those precipitation patterns can affect forests and agricultural land. Heat waves and droughts can degrade the productivity of working lands even as the seasons, the growing seasons are getting longer. So this requires particularly monitoring of wells and public water supplies. And then just to note, on the first slide, we also touched on pests and invasive species. So Maine is already experiencing an increase in pests and species. You might have noticed ticks and brown-tailed moss. So those warming temperatures, as I noted, can facilitate the spread of more invasive species and insects that then disturb and change a lot of the forest land, as well as a lot of other critical habitats and ecosystems or wildlife in the region and initiatives. I think you all mentioned that you had the brown-tailed moth nest clipping. So those are just great ways that can be helpful in removing some of the winter webs and mitigating the growth of those invasive pests and species over time. And then I think it's just on to what we're here to talk about.
I think we can maybe pause for about five minutes. Do people have any questions on the data that we presented? Yes.
Is there a, do you know if there's a legend?
Yes, they are contamination sites, yeah.
I don't know the answer to that. We can pull the data to see what the sources. Helpful to have in mind, especially as you think about what those actions are in priority areas. I don't know if it gets to that level of detail for each of the data points, but we can try to do it while we're all talking and pull that up. It's a great question.
Yeah.
Thank you. Yeah, this is a website. So I think Becky said you would put it on the town website.
This recording will be up, and our information officer will get the link up in the next day or two as a separate piece from the recording of this meeting. So it'll be available in two different aspects in the next day or two.
Yeah, yeah. And I think the idea is it's like a living document. So based on what we talked about this meeting, we can update it again, and it's just a great resource hub for this project. Yeah.
So we use, are you asking specifically about data sources? So we use mostly the US Census. And we also used data from the Maine Climate Hub, which has a lot of regional data related to climate change. Is there anything? Yeah. The groundwater information is, so we use GIS to make these maps, but they've... We linked all the sources at the bottom of the page, so you can look at the sources. I don't remember exactly which one we used for groundwater, but it should all be there, yeah.
Also say another, yeah, another great resource too is the state put out a scientific and technical report as they were developing their climate action plan. And there's really fantastic summary about the climate impacts. It's not as geographically specific to Pownal, but that has some really helpful overall regional trends that aren't, cannot be easily mapped, but is nice narrative to help interpret some of what you're seeing on the screen. Yeah, go ahead. I don't know. Do you all know the answer to that question? Okay. Yeah, and something to keep in mind as a part of our work, we have, like, we are scoped and scheduled to have a regional meeting. So thinking about what the topic of that conversation might be and who should be involved, it's helpful to, that could be something to consider about what we want to be talking about and coordinating, knowing that it's a really critical resource for everyone living here and in the surrounding areas. Yeah.
I'm sorry, just with respect to the particularly as it's based on the larger which is main water pools for the town. So it's not just houses that are pulling, Pownal is pulling. That is a
Thank you.
Other towns.
Yes.
There are smaller and more smaller that it's not as
Yeah.
enlarged.
Okay.
So, yeah, the projections, the one from the state economist tends to, I say underestimate a little bit for towns that are surrounding, like North Yarmouth, for example. The state economist shows a slow decline. For Pownal, it's a little bit of an increase. So each projection uses a different source. So these are all really, just like I said, they're estimates, they're not a 100% accurate prediction of what's going to happen. The census uses historic projections to show, based on historic trends, it gives an estimate of how much the town could grow or decline. So in summary, they're just, they're three different sources that use different data. Does that answer your question? I'm happy to go into it more, but it's, okay.
It's like the state projection, right? And the state is the one saying that we need to have accommodate different housing scenarios. You thought it better than I did. Yeah, yeah.
Thanks for those questions.
So, yeah, so I guess we'll start with what we're here to do today. We're looking for your feedback. I noticed a lot of you that came in took a question sheet. So those are the questions that we want to ask about. Yeah. Yeah. So I think everyone has a worksheet. These big sheets have the same questions. They're actually for writing on so that we can take a copy of these home. The smaller ones are just so that you can see the questions. Again, feel free to take the smaller one home with you, but we're only going to look at the one, the big ones that you write your answers on. So I think we can do one big group if people are comfortable with that. So we're asking questions pertaining to some needs in terms of short-term and long-term capacity for resilience and climate adaptation. And then on the backside, we're asking about specific goals. So in the green box, there are eight goals that the CRP has in terms of things like transportation, clean energy, environmental protection, health and resilience. And so on the backside, we're asking you to think about what goals the town should prioritize in the next few years, and then to rank some priority actions. And then finally, to think a bit about regional cooperation, especially because Pownal has a number of neighboring towns and does partner with towns like Freeport and Durham, and shares a lot of boundaries. And so it's important to consider not just what the town can do itself, but also to reach out to partners as well and to think about regional connectivity. So I think we'll have one large group. And I think we intend to give everyone a chance to share their thoughts, if they feel comfortable sharing their thoughts. And if anybody has this big sheet, would you raise your hand? The 11 by 17s, yeah. So I think
Why don't I just take notes up here?
Okay.
Yeah, I want people to be able to see what we're writing to, so, yeah, that's fine. Yeah.
Yeah, so I think, yeah, Lucy will take notes on what people say. Yes. Yes. Yes, so what she's referring to is that we had a kickoff meeting with town staff and members of the public where we talked about the partnership and went through some of these questions already. So this workshop is really going to build upon what we already heard at that meeting. And if there's anything new and anything that's come up as recent, we encourage you to add that in and to discuss it. So, yeah, the point of this is really to get some public input on some of those thoughts that came up. And I'm happy to speak to some of those that came up at the kickoff if people have questions.
That meeting has the road commissioner have the fire assessment books, and they have a lot of good books.
That meeting has the road commissioner have the um, fire assessment books, and they have a lot of good books. Um, yeah, so I'm hopeful that they're still here to represent.
Yeah, definitely.
Also maybe.
Um, we have that all in notes, and this is another chance to hear from folks that weren't there to add to the priorities that we heard from staff. So knowing that this is a bigger room than the first conversation, hoping that they'll build on each other. Um, so we could even just go.
Um, so I think we'll, we'll just go uh, question by question. Um, so we'll start with the first one. Uh, what is panel doing well to anticipate, to anticipate, cope with, and rebound from events or trends related to climate change? Uh, maybe people want to think about it and then. Give a few minutes.
Well, the road commissioner isn't here, but I will speak for him. They've done an awful lot of drainage work in the last two or three years to alleviate some of the issues that we've had as far as flooding problems.
Climate was watched out, you bet. It is amazing right now, and so all our neighbors, we walked the roads, and we just said how impressed we were with how the um, road crew just adjusted the way they were um, maintaining their road.
I would already been assessing, you know, the tools for the public works to be able to do that. Some of the capital. They're looking to have them do that more efficiently.
I would agree with that, Bo.
Are there specific in places in town where you've noticed that's the case?
All of the dirt roads.
Great.
Yes, we do.
Anything else maybe on the road improvements before we move on to another topic about what's happening in town? You want to speak any to the emergency management?
Yeah, uh, so, did they increase our mortgage training uh, in the past few years? To deal with the warmer temperatures and the warmer spring, it would have happened. This year, we reported that we had very short. Years before that, before this one, been driving on.
Right.
More pain and.
But this year, it's rained every weekend.
That's in generators uh, for Mount Powder, for instance, here in Town Hall.
I think we mentioned that in the.
And the panel center water association.
And for our communications purposes, we have a generator installed up. Thank you, ma'am.
Okay, so it is, is that our warming station if there is ever a need for one?
No.
No?
I'm curious if, um, I chatted on the phone last week with someone from age-friendly Freeport panel, and they brought up whether it makes sense, if there's a central generator location that residents can come to if there's an extended power outage to charge mobile devices, or how, what exists now can be accessible in that way, or does it, does there need to be additional infrastructure resources? Knowing that there's not a warming. Like what could be in place to support folks in times where there's extended outages, or um, people lose access to power for a longer period of time?
I, I think you'll find that shelters have to be manned, and we don't have the means to man one, so that we're doing more regional shelters. We kind of partner with North Yarmouth at times and should we need a warming or cooling center.
Yeah.
Wondering, are, are tire stations ever used in that capacity? Or is that something that was discussed when we were looking, finding out our new station?
It is part of the discussion, and we got new facilities, um, and a lot of kind of new exam.
Okay.
And then one to see more greater, they see on an individual basis.
Yes.
You lose power and, you know, it's amazing the number of generators you hear.
Okay.
I know I'm having, having trouble. I'm walking through the woods.
Yeah, yeah.
We'll just run a cord over to yours.
Yeah. Do you have like an emergency kit?
I'm talking to myself in the, the past tense.
Yeah.
I'm fully equipped now.
Yeah.
As long as food is, you know.
Right.
Try to maintain your food situation, it's the freezers that are, you know, all the weed that you're there. Work hard for that stuff in there. Yeah.
With the, so your only local gas station can generate power now, maybe the bottom could be gas.
Yeah, yeah, good.
Do, do people have any other thoughts on the first question before we move on? Um, okay. Uh, so the next question is, what could panel improve in the short term, so three to five years? Um, this is sort of thinking about um, anything like facilities, infrastructure, emergency response, community needs, resources. Um, so, thinking about sort of short-term improvements.
We, we could improve our public safety and public works facilities to include a shelter in town. We're in the design phase right now, but it's, it's in the wor- works, but. I'm hoping.
Are there ways that this effort could help support implementing that or advancing it? Sort of like, are there gaps in what you have planned, or how is that coming together so far?
Money's an obstacle.
Yeah.
You know, the public works and have our shapeable combined facilities that, you know, communications or something that would fall under.
Yeah.
Correct.
Yeah.
Great. And the first phase being a design and sizing and those sorts of things, this might be the funding to support that effort.
Well, I'll, I'll give you a quick overview. We've done a needs assessment. Now we need to do a final design, so we know square footage-wise where we're, what we're looking at. Now we need to do a final re- design with all the facilities within the facility and go from there. It'll be on this town meeting.
Thank you.
Yeah. Short-term, like increased accessibility, and I feel like um, some of the work that Freeport is doing, where they're putting in like a a bike and walking kind of wide sidewalk, you know, the over path, the new over paths. And then um, being able to extend with a bike lane down toward Desert of Maine, and a paper panel, like we're just looking at Merrill Road. That to be a way to tie in with our neighbors, so that then people in panel would have increased access, like to a grocery store via a bike.
Are there other reasons why that feels like a priority for you, hearing acceptability, if it's quite on the top of mind when you're thinking?
Well, we don't have a very huge story in town.
Yeah.
Um, so, so in order to access food.
Yeah.
Is really Shaw's, is the closest home to the world.
Yeah, so food security seems like something, okay, thank you. Does that bring up a thought for anybody else?
Oh, we have, uh, on the mains roads.
Yeah.
We don't have shoulders on those mains roads. It's a pretty good, even if your car might, or if it gets caught in it, then you're going somewhere else. So I think that, and people drive this super fast, so I think I understand the. And there are, there are actually like a lot of brave people that um, I've done it, right?
Yeah.
Yeah.
Yeah, there was about thirty of them at the end of Upper Minute Road tonight.
So it sounds like people are referring to uh, a need for bicycle infrastructure connectivity and, and safety as well. Um, like in terms of just making sure people can get places without a car. Is there um, any discussion or um, any thoughts on like, do people feel that something like carpooling or ride-share service could be an option in town to discuss um, transportation needs, or is that not something that um, people think is good for short-term? Just, just, just asking. Um, well, I think um, some. Yeah, so I, I haven't seen anything, any specific system that has worked for a particular town, but there's a lot of online groups and support groups where there will be sort of designated community drivers who can give um, people that need um, say, medical appointments and they can't drive. There are community Facebook groups that um, can basically support those people and offer to drive them or carpool with them. So a lot of what I've seen has been done primarily through social media and through uh, town notice websites. Yeah.
Yeah, go ahead.
Doesn't, I have a free work.
Yeah.
Sisters still have a pride.
They do. Yeah.
Yeah.
Yeah. I think that could be a res- like a resource, thinking about this and how they can have more drivers or have capacity and or even have mobile distribution of food for people who don't have a car or can't leave their homes, that there, there are creative ways to address both food security and access in the news. Yeah, thank you for bringing that up.
Local, one units have things called the reeds, the bus service.
Right.
That, you know, it's been offered here at one time, so that can be an option for us. Old Ridge.
Yeah.
Use them, not the, not the people wearing the bags.
And I think that's like a good point of Sam's comment earlier about thinking about who could be most vulnerable during weather-related disruptions or storms, and so thinking about the elderly population, do they have access, and what are they using? And focusing some of the resources there is really important, so. Yeah, go ahead.
I think with the right uh, safety.
Yes.
Like, not like, people like on phones, so like it's more safe driving.
Yeah, that's really true.
Yeah, and I think that plays right into, you know, the needs of these people driving.
Hmm, yeah.
Yeah. It's easy to do, everybody does it. Really big.
And see, are you, you're mostly responding to car uh, situations, right? Or is it pretty even?
As far as what?
Like the, the emergency calls that you're going for assist, are they accidents or?
I would say probably, I'd have to look at my spreadsheet, but I think it's like fifteen percent cars.
Okay, so it's not as.
No, the, the biggest response is now.
Okay, yeah.
Over there.
Yeah.
Yeah, and one more aspect of getting people out of cars is making rooms safer for kids that might went to the school, or went to the health hall, or, I mean, I call them deadly with that, and I don't want them taking their life in the hands of. School.
Wouldn't I think that would be better? If the shoulder is bigger than what. It's uh, not much, but.
Do people have any other thoughts on the second question? Yeah.
We're assessing what, what bigger storms and fence, our gravel roads are really vulnerable to a lot of water, and we really need to figure out a way to redesign the purpose to use, because they're financially very expensive. Run off into all the streams, killed on mass, gone to us with gravel.
Right.
So that's a, that from town government perspective, as we get more and more parched, made of them. Those roads are, just need to do a better job, respond to.
I think it's just this exception we've had recently, um, we've got a lot of water just going nowhere. Is there any kind of um, kind of expertise that could be brought to the table about how, what is better water management? Personally, I would love to have ponds as a way of, you know, containing some of this rather than see it go down the road. Um, and I think it may also play into the um, water quality.
Yeah.
Concerns about runoff being full of bad stuff in it.
Yeah.
So is there some experts in water management that we should bring in, have, look at all this water coming away and how to.
There are engineering controls that you can do, plunge pools, that type of thing that'll catch sediment before it enters a stream body. Uh, you know, beyond my expertise, but.
As we get more and more rain to ice storms, road crew has to treat with more and more salt, and salt is a huge issue for people who have wells close to roads. This is, there, there, we really need to look at new technologies, or get people out the roads right during one of the events. The issue that's gonna come up sooner or later, and we're really not prepared. Or are we thinking about different mitigations to ice? Big snowstorm, great fire. Having to judge it's really difficult for a group to figure out what.
One thought too to your, your comment is there's like low impact development and green infrastructure or sort of engineered designs that you can do at a specific site to help. Infiltrate and treat the water. So there, and there are people that do that stormwater management work with a more, with an engineering background. So it could be interesting to see others. By the way, we might want to prioritize that type of analysis and design alternatives. It takes installation, it takes maintenance, but there are creative ways to do it. And it's really a way of reimagining land use to accommodate heavy precipitation events and try to treat the water.
Our road crew would have some really good information about where are the bad spots?
Yeah.
Where is the water, the worst part of the year of the time going forward? And some, some of them, um, rippling.
Yeah.
So where is some of these lands that is so big that again, pay attention to some of these.
Yeah, yeah. Thanks for bringing that up.
I do think the salt stuff is a really important area of focus. I think this is maybe a very different situation, but it'd become something in our rural community we'd look at. But I recently saw that the New York City aquifers or the aquifers that support the New York City public water system. They're all in the Catskills, but they're coming back high in salt right now. And which is going to be very detrimental to New York City and the drinking water and everything. And if we're not, yeah, those are, they're in the Catskills, so there's a rural area as well.
Right.
So it just wanted, I think our phrase priority really should be what are aquifers and maintaining the, just the beauty of them. Whatever way we can do this to prevent any contamination.
Yeah, you understand, yeah.
Yeah, I was just gonna say, you know, kind of talking about the, the upgrades of. And whether what we're doing and the cost involved in handling the. It struck me that, that it's a good illustration of the inherent construct of the panel and comprehensive plan and saying you want to keep it town rural. And when rural, you think of it, there are roads. And so I think as we go forward and looking at it, it's going to be that. And we need to recognize that and acknowledge that there are going to be trade offs along the way. And water does all go down hills and downhill from us to the ocean. Consider our relationship. Cast the bag to realize they're going to be put on a mountain that takes up. Helping for whoever you want to die. The villain, the beginning of richer, post community, but we are, we are contributable to problems today. We do have a responsibility, I think. People consider it.
Yeah.
I just want to mention one of the benefits of the river is they don't get salt. So their roots just get sand on, which fills up the ditch.
They're all trade offs.
Yeah. Yeah.
But it does help.
Well, I was always wondering if there was a ratio in the, if it's purely standard, there's a little bit of salt. I knew that our roads were not salt related other than.
So the winter road stand gets a little bit of salt.
Yeah.
And drops well.
Yeah.
Very much.
Something you brought up in my mind, there are some towns that are starting to integrate climate into their comprehensive plan. So this might be maybe the longer term strategy, but knowing for the next time that comes around, is that something that you want to write into how you make zoning and land use decisions? Holding the community values really paramount to the process and also thinking about the way these can complicate what the future looks like. So some, some towns have a specific, a separate chapter or it's just integrated throughout. And are there other plans in the meantime that can think about it?
It seems like one thing, long term for us to think about is really, and I don't know how much difference in the comprehensive plan about. Whether in natural areas, like the, the, the romans and the streams and protecting the land and like that. It surrounds those areas because forests are incredible and being able to absorb. Water and, you know, so it just, it seems like in terms of where, where are our towns to go and where the. Should be in sort of the island with that whole. Water and what can happen.
Yeah, yeah. Yeah, go ahead.
Just to build on what several people have said, comprehensive planning has a bunch of two things that would be long term. One is an aquifer assessment because I, I talked to the aquifer manager, he said, honey, why? Do we really know that our aquifer can support us as a group? So that would be one, one thing, it was the quality and the quality of the water. And then moving on, we reached out, it's one of the other goal and which includes an assessment of the high priority areas. There's a man downstairs at Weldon and Fatschachin, he did a hot spot. But for the town to identify these areas in advance. So we get to do long term planning, someone, yeah, coming for preservation to be the law. We have a pinpointed area, so I realize there's all the private lands of all the discussion. These people don't know where the high priority areas are.
That sounds great. And Sam and I are actually working with the Town of Gore right now to do an open space plan to integrate, thinking about biodiversity, some of these other co-benefits of spaces like that for climate. But also for land preservation. So it could be interesting to weave those together in that type of planning effort and prioritization. Thanks for bringing that up.
I guess on the that point of land preservation.
Yeah.
Funding, certain funding. Sliding for private, you know, owners preserve their land or for the town to buy it. Like we can, it can be high priority, but if we don't have the money.
To acquire it, yes.
I said.
Yeah, yeah.
Well, interesting equation, I'm talking to some of the university. Putting in a electric storage facility near sport and they were talking about profitability of entering carbon sink town. The town has so much private, you know, public land. Negotiating. Cars trade off or. There is that option that we have out of the plan. We really took care of the wetlands and roads and streams in the arrangement. That made it financially feasible for landowners to buy into process of our acquisition. That's what the future happens, but it's something we clearly won't think about. Hard to go to a landlord and say, look. Like you're serving the land, not give them valuable things to help some for generations. But we can figure out a way to make them consider it as contributions of greater good. And not take anything away from that.
Well, and maybe there's workshops that the town could do or work private landowners and what they can do or what's out there. No, I don't know.
The theory is it's just starting.
Yeah, but if we're on the forefront, at least saying, starting to research it. So we know and people start asking, like I thought of it myself. But I like my land for myself and a lot of us are pretty.
You're going to sell a car for rent?
I would sell a car.
But I think your point, just building education awareness around what possibilities are and starting a conversation.
I think we're kind of transitioning to some long term goals. Do people have any other thoughts on some, on some long term goals in the future? Things to improve in the long term? So it's more land conservation.
Can I share an idea that age friendly Freeport panel had and I'm curious how it lands with this group? I think they, they piloted like a neighbor to neighbor, sort of like a neighborhood hub. Where first it's just sort of getting to know your neighbor, but then it's sort of understanding who's around you, what resources, what skills they have. So in the case of a long term power outage or you needed additional support when you, maybe the power lines are down and people can't access your home. That there's some sort of social infrastructure or network there. And so they piloted this in Freeport and are curious and be looking for funding to do something similar to sort of create neighborhood networks. In different parts of panel, so people know their neighbors, they feel comfortable calling them in a time of need or they can offer a service or skill that they have. If a neighbor also might need something. So anyways, they have a template and a bit of a pilot and was, are just curious if that's an idea that resonates with people here.
I was gonna say, I mean.
Yeah.
You know, it's been taken out.
Yeah.
Literally, you know, they're coming out.
Yeah.
Um, so if we're looking at that.
Yeah.
Then, you know, if we look at where, you know, where is that ice blade?
Yep.
I do think that's an area that panel is strong already, but just in, in the sense of doing it in self in a neighborly way. But maybe that's just unique to certain roads. But I think I've seen a lot of neighbors helping neighbors.
That's awesome. Yeah. And I don't, I mean, if it exists there, you don't need to, there's no need to reinvent the wheel. So it's helpful to note that is an asset that I mean.
That continues to implement it. The newer people move in and everything.
Yes.
But the need that that is already. That in that phase. There might be more on their roads.
That's true.
That's true.
Yeah. But I like this approach of sort of being strategic about where it could be most helpful based on where roads get inundated and cut off from services. Yeah, and then maybe ground trucing it with what's already here, what already exists, can we resource what's here or build something that's not.
Honey, I think you speak to a point, the sort of panel, panel is really the biggest best benefit. Older families are all connected by. Really tight relationships. What, I think the town, your long term, you figure out is how to do. Support the.
Some kind.
Some eating places that allow new families to integrate with the old family. Cause you haven't get a sense of how this works. You get the reality of the power has been, does exist in a really traditional way. And, you know, if new people move in. Give them the opportunity to understand how important it is for. How our families that. Communicate well to each other and well convinced that they've got to be able to have that opportunity to stay. So and that's a really kind of.
Your goal, it's all been the strength of panel that people are always counted on first and you live next to.
And that would be someone that is fragile to lose, unsure how to preserve it other than. Me, also the opportunities. Be a virgin, be in some of the churches, having more than half a gallon or. There's a lot of lines when part of it. We're on our own. And probably one of the highest rates of power outages in the state of Maine. Kind of the oxymoron is we have one of the line substation. We're well versed in how to take care of ourselves and hopefully take care of the other. It wasn't capital, it was a big deal. You know, talk about. Watching Patriots, Tom Brady was playing, y'all tuned up, they're on forever.
Yeah.
That are watchable. That same thing that happened in the panel, all the team was. Well, first we make a call. Coming to that. Something everybody should think about.
I, I think it happens more in rural communities.
Yeah.
Cause you really need to depend on your neighbors, you don't have access to meat or something, you're working these situations. The more towns shift from being rural to suburban, I think that's when we'll see the shift away from. That, that type of neighborly support in those situations.
Yeah.
Yeah.
Wasn't there some conversation at some point about trying to have a business district, a business, sort of like a sound town center? I mean, it was, that, that little restaurant used to be pretty vibrant. There was a setting through there that it needs. And so there was a, so there was a more of a social place for residents to aggregate as opposed to come to the town hall. And is there anything, I'm not sure we're talking about time resilience. But I think it's connected.
How isolated we get. The mutation we've developed. Town Hall is severely underutilized. This room where we have four whole sections, beautiful stage room that's now entertaining for bike night, I mean, beautiful glowing room. Whether or not the town on the side switches best in a community center. Will be up in town taxpayers, but. We really lack. From having a venue or having a bill to have opportunity for people to get together. They always, we always had them, you know, in that range and churches were fairly populated. And now, you know, if I go to church in panel, I lower the average median age by about ten years. So I mean, something has to happen. To grow. Like our neighbors in the.
Did you have, I haven't heard from you, so I'm.
Yeah, I was going to, you know, wrote that earlier, about people's vision of what rural character is. So right then, I'm thinking of Plan City and the, and both committees struggled with trying to figure out a definition. For that, even with a lot of town people's input. The economic development, we, a visioning session, like past work, long day that came up. But the result of the future is maybe the, in some people's mind, that's not rural. Whether that's right or wrong, I don't have an idea and I'm not, you know, pretending to know. But I think, I think we need to take it a little bit seriously because I think those are issues that will come bubbling up. We don't want to be rest down.
Thank you. I appreciate also the historical context or just past places where residents emerged before and might. Thanks for bringing that in.
And, and the Economic Development and Sustainability Committee is still working on plans for a. Center, town center. It's going to be in its infancy stages for a while yet, but they're. They're working their way through it. It is.
Need to acknowledge that there is a huge effort in town to build community and maintain.
Yeah.
We've got community that is coming up. I want to tell me here in this room, we're kind of needed. Um, you know, we've got, everything, you know, we've got people that participate in what I'm saying.
Yeah.
But the one that you, you know, people, the same people that believe in time is on, um, becoming law.
Well, I think one of the challenges that we faced in that whole issue of rural character and maybe in some of this. Um, relationships, but I'm also definitely moving. Do the, those people, they don't feel like either. So people are involved with not to let those organizations in their town, so that everybody knows each other. But they move into town, then they're connected to five other towns or other places. And that's just the reality of, you know, the digital age.
Yeah.
And we're not going to make that go away. So, so trying to get people to come to a Saturday event in the world of men when, you know.
kids or a grandkid at the soccer game and something else and could travel with them or, you know, a million other things. So, I mean, yeah, I have a bank, I'm going to be in town in seventeen, but, you know, many, many times in town events, you know, they happen sort of once a year or maybe once a month, but if it's something family with priority is accomplished with that, it just ends up not happening. So I'm not saying we shouldn't, we shouldn't do it in the early days, but, you know, you have to, I don't know, we need to do something that is more maybe more adapted to, quote unquote, new families and encouraging more local activity. I think I run with that too, if you like. Most homes have both parents working. The kid are involved in town worship and then all that is growing up. It's a different lifestyle now, of course.
Just, I'm sorry to interrupt. I see a couple of people in the back with their hands. I'm just wondering if people haven't shared yet. If you have any ideas, I don't, we don't want to pressure you, but if you have any insight you want to share in terms of some long-term needs.
I, I think maybe some education for our public works crew on some of the methodology of stormwater mitigation as far as keeping the bad stuff out of receiving waters.
Yeah, you have a thought?
Long-term, just like the community centers and everything. The community centers in the neighboring towns seem to be vibrant and people are at them all the time. They have like a football court inside, they've got things for all ages. There's childcare often, just people that work the building. As their full-time job, right? So they're, they're there. I don't know that that's in town's future. I don't know that, that there are rural communities throughout Maine that have something like that, that it has more than just, this building is amazing, but there are limitations to this building as well when you have.
Yeah. Are you talking about a, a community center or rec center that has multiple sort of things in one building? Yes, in North Arm, okay.
That building has a sporting section, a section for, um, just, yeah, the rent, it has all these different components that the parking, so they have people there working that building, that's their job, and that they have, they have events and everything. Um, for all ages of people.
Yeah.
That's.
There's something that's going on now, but I think a lot of people aren't aware of this. The North panel church is in congregation just putting support aside, you know. So it's being taken over by a local. Yes, that's it. So they're really going to struggle funding though, just to be the element. And that's something that all of the people who are helping come now is maybe centered garden. And they have a food pantry there on Tuesdays. Without support, that's all.
All those things cost a lot of money, community.
Yeah. I'm glad you brought it up, especially now when they're losing funding from other places.
Yeah. Potentially going to dampen the community activity in your center. You will still be in the panel or whatever, but a free for community service.
Yeah.
There's a lot of that in Freeport. It's available for folks to come, but it's, it's in Freeport's, but that's, you know, that's where the activity.
Yeah.
But if you've got an infrastructure there.
Right.
Um, that can, and it's, I think, willing to look at.
Yeah.
Offered to a new speaker, a partner of, they have expertise, they've taken years to build there.
Yeah.
Um, that, that could, could be loved.
Yeah. Thanks for raising that. Yeah.
Yeah.
Um. So there are many great facilities, like some of it's in Portland as well. Have community, really, which is, they're, they're public. Um, and so it's, you know, free to pick for anybody. And it can also be a little educational site. Um, and, and when I think about engaging young people and, and that's skill sharing, right? So that we're building, you know, and that sharing of skill to the older folks and people that didn't know how to do how to prove the dream, for example, with, um, other people in our community who may not know that.
I love that idea. It, it brings up a couple of things. I think like there, there are a couple of needs that it could address and if there's a group of people who are stewarding it, so it doesn't fall on the town to maintain, that wouldn't require an additional burden or, you know, um, expectation on limited capacity staff. So that's a really cool idea and can also maybe address some food insecurity. There could be really neat ways of bringing partners together and organizing, maintaining and managing that space that's intergenerational and thinking about some of the different needs. So it could be intersectional. So thank you for raising that.
Yeah. Do people have, have any other thoughts on long-term improvement, improvements before we start looking at some of the action strategies on the other side? Yes.
Do you think how much that costs? A general idea?
We aren't even entertaining the idea yet. So no, no studies have been done as far as cost.
Okay. Um, so if you flip your sheet over to the other side, oh, yes.
Yes. Yeah.
For instance, town on land currently is mostly woods. And if you want to keep it climate resilient, low cost, you could have a hunting club, introduce kids to little deer hunting, get rid of ticks. And solve a whole lot of problems at very low expense, create some community, get some education going. And that's not even long-term, like you could do that next November. So that's, that's just looking at a resource for exactly what it is. Not trying to change it, not trying to spend money to try to change it, trying to preserve it. And trying to honor the traditions of your community. And create new new, um, contacts, new.
Steward on the way.
Yeah.
Very tough.
Oh, that's cool. Yes.
People with resources.
Yeah. Thank you.
Um, yeah. So looking at the other side of your worksheet. What three action areas should panel prioritize and why? This is referring to the topic areas in the green boxes on the green chart. Um, it lists things like transportation emissions, building upgrades, clean energy. Um, so we want to know kind of what the top three areas are.
I think based on what we've heard tonight. Um, climate-ready infrastructure, thinking about those roads and drinking water comes to mind. I'm curious what else is jumping out for folk based on what we've already talked about, or if there's anything big that's missing. Yeah.
Conversation, the community engagement.
Great. Thank you.
I think that the, the EBS, community engagement versus the, um, in addition to the like, just supporting people that are here, making sure everyone's safe, that have an emergency situation. That, that feels, that will difference my community engagement, like I said.
Yeah.
And as, as much as we talked about runoff and groundwater. I think environmental protection is one of the huge issues for people.
Do people think also the, uh, healthy and resilient people category, which is on, um, more um, cooling centers, peer-to-peer programs, communication? Um, yeah.
They're still building upgrades.
Yeah. Yeah.
We're all resilient, we're just not particularly healthy.
I think another, uh, point brought up, um, a few minutes ago or so was, uh, the need for safer biking and walking. Do people, um, feel that, uh, reducing transportation emissions is a priority in town, that the town should work to pursue? As a top goal? No?
Clearly wants to be so much bigger.
Okay.
I, I think it would be a long-term goal.
Yeah.
Great.
If a lot of our traffic is street traffic, other towns will.
Think about what you have control and influence over.
Right. We, we get a lot of commuter traffic from the Lewiston Auburn area coming through town headed for the interstate.
Yeah.
So the next question is asking, um, more specifically in each of the priority action areas. What is one specific action that panel could take? Um, so if you look at some of the top goals, like climate infrastructure, municipal building upgrades, um, community engagement. What are some sort of specific things the town can do right now to sort of move towards those goals? Yeah. Yeah.
If you need to continue to push in town, education on the combining fire station, public work, you put a bunch of money into it already. A godly number of meetings, um, and there are a godly number of orders come, um, and it's going to cost a bunch of money. Um, but it's going to cost the town a bunch of money if we don't. And there's quite a number of those issues, um, that we've been talking about. And I think maybe we're invested for the town, um, at major staff at the town. But I think that, that we'll need to see that through.
I agree. I think that's our highest priority right now.
Okay.
And I like the thing that you suggested, Andy, about, um, really researching the way water can be. That's just understanding that more, how it flows and dealing with it. Cause gosh, we're, we're just getting drenched after the day we did.
Yeah.
Yeah.
There's, there's ways to sequester pollutants before they go into streams. So just got to explore it. I'm not saying we want to be an MS four community, but.
There's still things you can do.
Right.
Yeah. Even think about on a, a property scale or, you know, a roadway, there are different, different models of work. So I think that's.
Anything else?
Yes, I think we generated.
I think there were a lot of, uh, things people brought up, um, brought up earlier. Um, so the last thing we're asking about is on regional cooperation and any ways that panel can cooperate with its neighboring towns. So there was a couple of things brought up earlier. Is there anything new the town can do um, to further those connections?
I, I think the town's always looking for ways to collaborate with the neighboring towns. And we do a pretty darn good job of collaborating with our neighboring towns now. Freeport Rescue does our EMS transports. We do a lot with North Yarmouth. We do a, a lot with Durham. It's.
The schools?
Yeah, we have, we share schools with Freeport and Durham. So it's.
Yeah. And I think we touched on, we could talk about regionalization with respect to water quality and aquifer, also Freeport Community Services and some of these other ways that.
Yep. Freeport Community Services, another one. I'm sorry, Bo, I didn't mean to leave you out.
No need to, it already exists. Figure out what the additional needs are. Yeah.
Is there anything else on regional collaboration that hasn't come up yet?
After, uh, this and maybe other towns, um, not as huge schools as clearly designated emergency, uh, emergency shelters.
I believe Durham Community School is their emergency shelter. I, I think, but I'm not a hundred percent positive. Do you happen to know?
Um, it may be a short term.
Short term, yeah.
Most of the long-term shelters have stood up in the big town, a hundred to a hundred. And the reason they do that is for staff at first.
Yeah.
That's where the red, because usually you gotta bring in the red cars to staff them.
Yeah.
And they don't want to be spread out across every particular community and.
I just know that like Durham Community School has several showers. And so that's part of a big.
That's required.
Yeah. So when you have a warm space, showers and the, you know, facilities, um, the room and all that. And potentially the ability to serve food, I don't know.
You gotta have staffing and there's only.
Yeah. So that, those are all components which the community school can be able to do, but they don't have staffing, so I don't know if they would just have to call the red car for it.
Like I said, I think.
Yeah.
They're very.
Yeah. And if, if there's one of those families that say, we need help, you've been without power, no generator, it's my day, then they come in the shower, you know, they, they get their needs met to the best of their abilities.
So there's also a group, a CERT group that's, they're having a meeting here Wednesday night that would be whenever there's a big disaster or storm or like an ice storm or ninety-eight that we had. They would come in and help staff shelters and help the communities. So if anybody's interested in that Wednesday night, there's a meeting here.
Mr. The.
Yes.
Yeah. So to, to back up what Andy just said, what they're looking for is community involvement. And you don't have to be trained in any specific, for instance, uh, the lady who was attending it, she gives an example of a ninety-three-year-old woman who comes in and reads books to the children.
Yeah.
So you don't have to have a specific.
Yeah. Um, any final thoughts before we talk about, uh, next steps? Um, also, if people have additional questions, we have a comment box right there. So if anything comes up as you're leaving or you remember to ask something, if you're to write it on an index card, and we'll, we'll be sure to take note of it. Um, so in terms of our next steps, we are, um, approaching the end of this process. We're going to be helping the town enroll. This requires submitting enrollment materials. So all, all of what we heard today will get incorporated into a written document. As well as what we heard at, at the kickoff. I know some people that are here today were at the kickoff meeting, as well as some town staff here today. And we're going to be submitting these to the state. And then we're going to work with the town to pass a, what's called municipal resolution. And that goes through, um, some of the key goals and, uh, priorities for the town. And then finally, we will assist the town in writing its, its first grant proposal. And then from there, the community will be enrolled in the partnership. Um, so we also will be reaching out to some key groups and stakeholders in town. So, um, we'll be sending out a, uh, Google form, if you haven't received that already, um, it's. be sending out a Google form, if you haven't received that already, it's out, it's been sent to a few key committees in town, asking some targeted questions. So I would say feel free to look out for that, we'll have the story map up on the town website, so you can go through that and look at some of the facts you presented and share your thoughts as well. Did I miss anything?
Thank you all so much.
Yes, we, yes, yes.
Funding for the grants, is it strictly state or is it dependent on federal funding that should be given?
So I think the like 50 to 75,000, I believe the 50,000 and below is all state funding, that bump is from, the state got a five-year NOAA grant application, or grant, they're now in their first year of funding. So I think the uncertainty might be about that additional line, but there should be 50,000. I think the other question is, as the state's budget is impacted by other federal funding cuts, how does that impact this program? But you could see, there are two-thirds of main communities that rely on, that benefit from this program, so I think considering that will be important, but the idea is that we'll keep applying, probably with the 50 to 75 in mind until we hear otherwise, but there's, most of the funding for this is currently state funding with some additional federal in top. It's a brilliant question, yeah.
Thanks so much.
Yes, thank you all for coming, this is very valuable, we really appreciate all your feedback. If people have the big sheets, we'll take those, the smaller sheets, feel free to take home with you if you want to review the questions. You notice we also put some of the goals spreadsheet, it's an Excel table with some colors on it. If you could kindly return those to us, we're actually working with a few other towns on this too, so we probably will reuse those, as well as the sheets with some of the action strategies that other towns have used. We'll take those back, I don't know if that makes sense. Yes, that's a bigger one.
I think it's.
And as always, I believe that we're able to surprise. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and the republic of America for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you. First item of business is fiscal year 25 AP warrant number 26, the amount of $60,577.96.
I will move that we pay AP warrant number 26 in the amount of $60,577.96.
Second.
Moved and seconded to pay AP warrant number 26 the amount of $60,577.96, is there any further discussion? Seeing none all in favor, motion carries. Next item is a payroll journal number 423, the amount of $9,922.59.
I will move that we pay payroll journal number 423 in the amount of $9,922.59.
I second.
Moved and seconded to pay payroll journal number 423 in the amount of $9,922.59, is there any further discussion? Seeing none all in favor, next motion carries. Next item on the agenda is the minutes of the previous meeting, it's the minutes of April 29th, 2025, public hearings and regular meeting.
I will move that we approve the minutes of the April 28th, 2025, public hearings and regular meetings, with a good job to Kathy Ho.
I second.
Moved and seconded to approve the minutes of previous meeting, April 28th, 2025, public hearing and regular meeting, is there any discussion? Seeing none all in favor. Next item is public comment on non-agenda items, it's an opportunity for any resident of the town to step forward to the microphone, identify yourself, and be heard by the select board. Is there any resident from the town of panel that would like to suffer the slings and arrows of the select board? Next item on the agenda is department head reports, department head reports can be viewed on the respective website pages by clicking on the department. Reports are ably written and edited. Get questions from the department head that are here now, Mr. O'Brien.
I have none.
Mistake, either do I and the select board have anything to report at this time?
Nothing from.
Or do I? Next item on the agenda is new business, sign annual town meeting warrant, Becky.
Okay, so you've got the copy ready for sign, so after our last public hearing, the feedback was to move a couple of articles, which I did, fix some grammar spelling, all those minor changes have been done, and our part-time clerk caught a small grammar thing today that she pointed out, which I fixed, was really a spacing thing, but at this point it is at its final page. You two have draft copies and then there's a clean copy to sign, John.
Yep, I'm just looking at.
Double check it, absolutely.
At the notes. Yep.
Feel comfortable, Mr. O'Brien?
I do, I will move that we sign the 2025 panel town warrant for our annual town meeting.
Second.
Then moved and seconded to approve the annual town meeting warrant for the year 2025, is there any further discussion? Seeing none all in favor, motion carries. Thank you very much, Becky, job well done. Bo Chesney for coming in and reading, Andy O'Brien for reading the minutes, thank you. Next item on the agenda is a short-term rental policy, Becky.
So before you is another copy that was presented, you tabled it, adjusted it on it two more weeks, the only addition is in item number one, a $20 first-time registration fee will be assessed, that was something that we had talked about in the last couple of meetings, and we just made that adjustment, Tim took care of that for me last week, so that is the only addition from the last meeting.
Seeing that, Mr. O'Brien, do you have anything you'd like to add?
I do not.
Hope you're not.
Or do I? So Andy would like to make a motion.
I would like to move that the.
Go ahead, Andy.
Yep, I would like to move that we approve the town of panel short-term rental registration policy.
Seconded, is there any discussion? You don't have the phone. We recognize you, this is Bo Chesney from Lawrence Road.
Thank you. I just have a quick question on that addition of $20 for registration fee, when is that actually, you have time of application or the plan?
I would say the time of application, yes.
Want to get there?
It probably should be.
Are all application fees due? Yeah. Standard operating procedure, yeah.
Yeah, just like any permit.
Yes.
Heidi Richards, mine at Rhode, I just prepared something that I wanted to read and have on record. I wanted to start by saying thank you to the select board and to all those that had a hand in drafting this policy, for their time and effort on this document, it is clear it has been thoughtfully worked on, and a great deal of time and energy went into creating it by multiple people. I wanted to also say thank you for taking the time to hear all my concerns, questions, and suggestions, as well as concerns as of the voices of other residents. All of us citizens have different lenses that we view the world through, and our differences when voiced and considered can make us stronger together and help us develop stronger documents and policies. My hope is that it was clear to this board and to those in attendance or participating via YouTube that I have not been in opposition of some sort of guidelines being put into place for short-term rentals in panel. My intentions at these meetings have been for clarity, understanding, and pointing out some things that may seem hard to interpret or details possibly missing from the document. I have been more interested in making sure that all those that need to interpret this document in the years to come have a clear understanding of what the document's intention is, how it will be enforced, and what the process is if there is ever an issue of wanting to appeal a decision made in conjunction with the enforcement of this policy. The reason I had so many questions for clarity on the policy versus ordinance is that this is a new direction for panel. Once something is done once, it often opens the doors for that something to be done again, meaning that going with the policy instead of an ordinance on something of this nature will be the first of its kind for our town, and opens up the potential for more policies impacting landowners to be drafted and enacted in the future. With that being said, it's important that the process is clear and that we get it right the first time. I understand the intention of this board and possibly of the many people that worked on the wording of this policy, and why those involved felt a policy would be more fluid and less intrusive than an ordinance when creating guidelines for land and business owners to follow. I also understand that the intention has always been to keep those visiting our town safe. Hopefully, the hopes and goals of this board will be how the policy is interpreted and in fact is carried out in the decades to come. Again, I will repeat that my intention has never been to be difficult or delay the process, yet it was to understand this new process and new document for clarity, more clearly. It was to help the town produce a document that hopefully will stand the test of time and do what this board says they hope it will do, which is to keep people more safe, while also not having too great of an impact or oversight on residents and business owners. Back in December, when this policy was presented as a draft ordinance with very different and much more restrictive language, I wrote to this board and those that likely had a hand in creating this new draft language, I wrote, "If an ordinance is pursued, we ask that you consider the years of resources and labor that your neighbors have put into building their short-term rental units, and that these are not investment properties, but rather our sustenance. We ask you to be mindful of how language written into an ordinance could hurt panel families, let us be good neighbors to each other and support each other to be independent unto itself or in this situation to ourselves. Though this is not an ordinance, I feel you have been thoughtful in your language, you have been mindful of your neighbors and what helps them sustain from day to day, you have also listened to public comment and taken suggestions and clarified questions. I asked that you speak plainly about your intentions, and I believe you have accomplished that. Personally, the only challenge for me is that I tend to lean towards the public having the opportunity to vote and having the final say if a legal document or legal language is being put into place that impacts what happens on our land. I understand that is not the direction this board is going on in this particular matter. My hope is that this new direction will work for us all, the town government, those keeping us safe, and panel residents. I will trust this new direction and process and hope that it works as intended. Thank you again for your hard work and your thoughtfulness in drafting the new guidelines for operating a short-term rental in our town."
Thank you, Heidi. I moved it.
Is there any further discussion? The none, all in favor? Policy's adopted. Next item on the agenda is RFP for legal services for the town of panel, we need to open the bids, Becky has been elected to open the bids.
So we received two, one from Pretty Flaherty and one from Drummond Woodson. Well, this will probably be a little bit more comprehensive, let me see if I can find some high points right at the beginning.
Background, we've had our former county attorney retired and the firm no longer handling municipal accounts, so we had to put our desire for legal counsel out to bid, as by our RFP policy, we had two bids, the first bid from.
So Pretty Flaherty, just finding their fees, partners of council, 265 per hour, associates are 215 per hour, paralegals 155 per hour, bond-related work 295 per hour, other specialty work not to exceed 305 per hour. And then there's just some comprehensive about their billing fees, communication between the town, and a lot of background information on the potential attorneys that would be working for us with lists of references, which we asked for, everything that we asked for is in this RMD to check out, so I'm going to pass this down. Right, Drummond Woodson. Need my glasses for this one. There's this tab that might be easier to see. All right, so they've got the cover letter qualifications, experience, proposed fee structure, discounted hourly rate of 250 for attorneys, specialized municipal work will be billed at prevailing rates which currently range from 250 to 510. We will bill the time of paralegals at 200 per hour, it's standard practice to review and update our professional fees annually. Then they go on, so their references, the attorney resumes that could potentially be working with us, their qualifications, experience, and cover letters. Oh, pass that down. So those are the two proposals that we have for our legal counsel.
Next step, Becky?
My next step is the board looks that over and will choose which RFP they would like to move forward with, we would then notify.
All right, that's interesting reading, so we'll table that for the discussion for next meeting. What's up with that? Andy?
I am.
Unless you want to.
No.
Take the time during this meeting to do these.
It's going to take me a minute to read this.
Thank you, Becky, for. Yes.
Just one way to do it a little, we have the data from the previous firm, just in terms of the hours that they've spent, and how those hours at different levels, associate or attorney, partner, and then that against.
We have the invoices, and the invoices are broken down, so it will even say if it was an attorney, if it was a paralegal, if it was an associate, and what the hourly rate was. Our current hourly rate is 250 per hour, or was, with Johnson Bear, was 250 per hour, so these are fairly close for the attorney rates.
Thanks. All right, is there any other new business?
I have none.
Is there any old business we need to take care of?
Well, this, okay, I was gone last week, so as I got through my emails today, so just following up with Casella, we talked two weeks ago about them potentially changing their route time during the summer for pickup to start at 6:00 AM, and then after a quick discussion, they have now asked if that can be a permanent change, given the fact the contract does say 6:00 AM, I think that we're bound by that. I also think it makes more sense to not be back and forth, their reasoning is it standardizes with them, a lot of the routes start at 6:00, so it makes it easier for scheduling and getting people out on the routes, they're also facing longer lines at EcoMaine, and it just helps them get the trash route done in a more reasonable hour, and that was the reasoning for asking, so I said I would bring it back to the board. This would start the week of June 5th, they would do quote-unquote chase missed pickups for the first two weeks, so you could either, if you have the app, report or call, and they would send the truck back if you hadn't gotten your trash out by 6 o'clock when they came through for the first two weeks. They're also going to develop a mailer that we will send out with the quarterly mailer in June, timing is going to be really close if it's going to hit before June 5th, but we'll be able to get it on the website, put in the constant contact and just try to get the information out. Put in the constant contact and just try to get the information out, um, that the time change is going to start in June.
We have our esteemed sign builder, build one for community day to give to the fifth grade table.
Yes. She would probably love to do that.
Brand new town sign. Mr. O'Brien has volunteered to put a town truck out in the middle of Route nine, stop traffic and.
Oh, sure. I'm just going to run fast after I park it.
So that's it. Then let's just do it.
Good.
Adjust. Already adjusted well to be in position of the big dumpster. So.
Great. I will let them know tomorrow.
Unless any board member has any objection to, wants to fight with Selon. Let's just really try hard in the beginning because all my residents, so we don't have to catch up the whole, the whole summer.
Okay, good. Uh, so grateful for Casella and their willingness to work together with the town. It's a great partner. Uh, is there any other old business? Is there any correspondence?
There was something I sent, uh, or Crystal sent out in the email. I forgot to print it. It was a letter from a realtor offering her services to represent the town in any town-owned land. I'll bring it to the next one. I'm sorry. I forgot. I tried to look to see if I could pull it up in this email, but I didn't.
See that.
Yeah. I, I realized a few minutes ago I had forgotten to print that off.
All right. Is there any other business that I'm going to move to go into executive session? One MRSA four oh five sixty contract.